Okay, we are live.
Okay, good morning, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. If everyone would join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
Under God.
One nation.
End of it.
Under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball.
Okay. First item of business is the minutes from the July 23rd, 2020 Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chair, if there's nobody that has any changes to make to the minutes, I would move passage of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 23rd, 2020 as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. I believe we probably have to do a roll call vote since you guys are not present.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner Price.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sinrom.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, and do we have any citizens' input?
No, sir.
Okay, and 9:05, so we have a couple minutes again. I have to go ahead and read the, read everything first, right, before we do the, yeah, okay.
You'll read it and then staff will.
Good. Okay, 9:05, our first item of business is a, the public hearing on consideration of a major use permit, MUP 18-28. The applicant is Noble Farms proposing a six-phase development for commercial cannabis that would include three commercial cannabis cultivation licenses, two A-type 2B mixed light cannabis licenses to allow for 15,000 square feet of cultivation area within 10 greenhouses by the end of Phase 6, and a Type 13 self-distribution license that would allow legal transportation of cannabis to and from the site. Project is located at 18211 Ponderosa Trail, Lower Lake, and further described as APN 012-048-11.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Take this off just while I'm presenting and talking. Takara Nicole Thomas, Deputy Director. We are actually proposing to pull this item from today's agenda as there are some additional changes that would need to be made for this item, and we need to work with the applicant in order to bring it back before you all.
Okay. And do we have to vote on that then, or?
Yes.
Okay. So does somebody have a motion they would like to make up there?
You can do so by, you don't have to offici-, I'm sorry, this is Nicole.
Yes.
Commissioner. You, you don't have to have a motion, it doesn't necessarily need to be that formal, you can do it by consensus, but because we have remote commissioners, the individual consensus needs to be voiced from each commissioner.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes. Okay, do we have a consensus, do we do a roll call consensus? Does that work, Nicole?
Yes, that's how it would look.
Okay. So we're gonna do a roll call consensus if everyone is in.
I, I would have a question, Mr. Chair. Nicole, do we have to open this to public comment like we do for our regular meetings when we're there? So people that are there now can speak on the item if they wish?
Well, the, the notice and the agenda, from what I've seen, noted that, that staff was going to request that this item be pulled, and my understanding is it's being pulled because the item is changing. There were changes to the application. If, if that's incorrect, staff can correct me, but if that's the case, then comments today would be on an item that will not be before you for consideration because the item is changing.
That's correct, Nicole.
So, um, there, I'm not entirely certain. So, no, I don't think comments would be appropriate if the item is being pulled today.
Okay. I'm ready, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes, we're voting on moving this to a different time, correct?
We're just seeing if there's a consensus to pull it from the agenda.
Alright, yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sinrom.
Yes.
Okay. And now we have another two minutes to kill.
I tried, but you guys kept rushing through.
You don't have to wait until 9:10, we can change that time that's on the, for the second item.
Are, are you sure I didn't, I thought we can't start?
No, it just has to start at 9:05. I spaced them out five minutes apart, as long as the first one starts on or after 9:05.
The way we've always done in the past is that we, because this is the way it's publicized.
Hey Jake. Jake.
Maybe there might be public outside waiting to speak on this?
Yes, yes, I mean.
It's, it's, it's Commissioner Hess. I've been disconnected and then automatically reconnected about four times already. I don't know if anybody else is reporting glitches like that, but it's, so far it's reconnected me automatically, but it's happened regularly in just this short time.
Okay.
Just FYI.
Okay, I, I would account that to your local network. I haven't noticed any issues on my ends.
Okay.
I can, I'll chat you some, some tips if you'd like.
Sure, I mean, as long as it keeps reconnecting, that's fine. I haven't missed anything of substance yet, so.
Okay.
You may want to disconnect the video.
If it continues, John, you may need to disconnect your video.
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah. Okay, we're at 9:10. Next item is a public hearing on consideration of a major use permit, UP 18-48, and a mitigated negative declaration, IS 18-71. The applicant is Spencer Clark, proposing, one, A-type 3 outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation license consisting of 43,560 square feet of canopy area. Project location is 21242 Morgan Valley Road, Lower Lake, and further described as APN 012-069-08. Let staff go ahead, yes, please.
Hi, I'm Victor Fernandez, Assistant Planner with the Community Development Department. Today I'll be presenting the major use permit, which was submitted by Spencer Clark. It has me, it has, they have notified me that they'll be present through the Zoom meeting, and they won't be in the chambers. So what I'll be going over today is the permit request, the project description, the site description, the project analysis, as well as the recommendations and conditions that staff has provided. So to start things off, the applicant seeks approval of a major use permit to cultivate 41,550 square feet of outdoor cultivation, cannabis cultivation located within an area of 41,940 square feet. So the canopy area is the 41,550, and the cultivation area is 41,940. So they are also in search of, seeking approval of the construction of some ancillary structures that will be supporting the cultivation as well. For this cultivation, it will require minimum ground disturbance. If you look in the staff report, in the site plans, as well as the attachments, you can see that the cultivation area is a circular proposal. So in the staff report, I've outlined that it is a circular area of 230 feet in diameter that will contain up to 397 pots on 11 concentric circles. So I want to explain that a little bit, so if we were to imagine it's, it's a big circle, and each 10 feet, there's another circle where the plants are gonna be kind of aligned, so it would be kind of a target. So the total proposed canopy size is the 41,550 square feet, which is total to approximately 0.9% of the space to be cultivated in relation to the parcel size itself. What the applicant is requesting is an A-type 3 outdoor license, which allows up to one acre of cultivation. The applicant will be cultivating 41,000 square feet, 41,550 square feet, which is just shy of an acre. The site is approximately 3-point miles east from the community growth boundary, and then some of the structures that I explained earlier that would include, they'll be installing a 12-by-16 fertilizer and chemical storage shed, and a 12-by-16 harvest storage shed as well. According to the applicant, all the fertilizers will be stored in the proposed storage building and will be utilized minimally. The cultivation area will be also fenced around with a 6-foot, 6-foot height fence that will be surrounding the cultivation area as well. In regards to the water source for the cannabis cultivation operation, they have an onsite permitted well that draws approximately 48 gallons per minute, which translates to approximately 25,245,561 gallons per year. According to the property management plan, the cultivation of cannabis will be using approximately 309,000 gallons annually, which is approximately 1.22% usage of the full capacity for the well. They do have additional water usage for the existing household or the existing single-family dwelling, but in regards to the cannabis cultivation, it'll be 309,000. And I've included the table that the applicant provided and the staff report as well on page 2. So in regards to the irrigation system, they'll be using a drip system emission to irrigate the cultivation site. In regards to water use as well, a condition of approval has been added that requires the applicant to install a meter to the well that continuously measures the well and the water level. And additionally, the applicant will need to maintain a record of data collected, and will need to provide the data to the county, the Community Development Department on an annual basis. The applicant does propose the hours of operation to be Monday through Sunday, 8 to 5 p.m. A maximum employee, maximum number of employees would consist of 2 to 3 employees. So with this information, just to jump in a little early, staff is recommending approval of the major use permit, which is file number UP 18-48, with several conditions outlined in full in the staff report and conditions of approval as well. So the site itself is accessed through a private road off of Morgan Valley Road. The approximate acreage of the parcel is approximately 104.793 acres in size, and it is zoned APZ. Commercial cannabis cultivation is allowed in the agricultural preserve district zoning, under obtaining a major mining use permit, which the applicant has submitted for a major use permit. And again, the total proposed canopy size is 41,550 square feet, which is approximately 0.9% of the area used. So in regards to the project analysis, staff has reviewed the project to be, to ensure that is concurrent with the Lake County General Plan, Lower Lake Area Plan, and the zoning ordinance as well. Staff determined that the project is consistent with all those plans listed. And commercial cannabis is, is permitted in the APZ upon issuance of a use permit. So as mentioned before, the proposed use is consistent with the land use. The topography for the cultivation area is approximately 0 to 10% grade. The majority of the site is very steep, but the area that they're proposing is, is not as steep as the entire parcel. And again, the proposed project is not located within a community growth boundary. So in regards to the California Environmental Quality Act, the major use permit was submitted by the applicant Spencer Clark, and is recommended to be categorized as a mitigative negative declaration as staff has determined that all the impacts can be mitigated and reduced to less than significant. I've outlined in the staff report the mitigations that are proposed. Those mitigations include air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, geology and soils, noise, and wildfire. So some findings need to be met in order to recommend approval for the major use permit. Some of the findings are included in the major use permit, Article 51 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and as well as Article 27 of the Commercial Cannabis Cultivation Ordinance located within the Lake County Zoning Ordinance. Staff has determined that the proposed project complies with the major use permit findings, therefore recommending approval. So staff is recommending approval of the major use permit, UP 18-48. The staff report fully outlines the conditions and attachment for, and also the conditions of approval. Some of the conditions of approval and mitigations are in regards to air quality, dust particulates, equipment requirements, access and parking requirements, geology and soils, water quality, and cultural resources. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm ready for questions.
Do we have the applicant on? Do we have the, do we have the applicant on? Participating? Jake?
Oh, what is the name of the applicant?
Spencer Clark or his representative Perry Clark?
It does look like we have Perry Clark on Zoom.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is John. I don't have any questions for planning staff, but I might have a couple after we hear from the applicant.
Okay, we do have the applicant's representative on here. If you want to direct any questions, John? Or does anybody else have any questions for staff? I do have one question. This is mentioned in here that there is an existing cultivation on this site, correct? It's listed at page 16 of the Property Management Plan.
Of the Property Management Plan?
Mm-hmm. And I'm just wondering, the way that stands now, that is a code violation, correct?
Maybe I could jump in real quick from the representative? There's no cultivation out there. We were gonna do an early activation permit and then decided against that. So at the moment, it's just barren land.
Okay. And this was, okay, oh, two years ago, or a year and a half ago. Okay.
Yeah, so when, if I may, when I conducted a site visit, staff confirmed that there was no active cultivation.
Okay.
On the site.
Okay. John, you had a question for the representative of the applicant?
No, no, I, perhaps I misspoke. I meant that I didn't have any questions for planning staff, but if the applicant had a comment or two to make, I might have a question about that.
Okay. Looks like Perry, do you have anything you wish to add to what staff has spoken about?
No, you know, I think Victor did a great job, so I appreciate, I appreciate that. You know, it's a large piece of property with good water, and it's, you know, it kinda has its own area up there, so hopefully it's a suitable use for the property.
Right. What is the, I know it was in here somewhere, I just can't find it right now. The access to the property, that's a good, I think there was something mentioned, right? It's a pretty good road?
Yeah, it's a large, you know, more than 20 feet of width. You know, maintained by us, and part of that proposal is us actually adding a few more turnouts for fire trucks and things like that to the area.
Yeah, I did see that. Okay. Alright, if nobody has anything else, I suppose we'll see if there's any other public comment?
Mr. Chair, I do, looking at these photographs in the PowerPoint that we just received this morning, it looks like there's been some previous groundwork in Slides 12, 13, 14, and 15. It shows signs of, I don't know if they drew a harrow over it, or it's, it's hard to tell whether it's done by a machine or if it's, it's done by the rainwater as far as the surface of the ground. Lots of roads of, you know, dugout areas, so. We have addressed runoff and any measures that are gonna have to be taken to, for ground erosion and that kind of thing is my question to staff.
Yeah, so I can go ahead and answer that, and I might ask Perry to kind of jump in on this as well. But the property was disturbed by the 2015 Valley Fire. So to my knowledge, it seemed that the applicant had to do some tree clearing and brush clearing for burnt-out material that was on the property.
Okay. I'm looking especially at Slide number, I guess it's 14. Do you see the divots, or the rows of lines that are going perpendicular to the, or parallel to the hill, I guess?
I didn't, I haven't seen that, so I don't know what you're talking about, Bob. I haven't been home this morning.
Looking at, Bob?
The PowerPoint on Slide 14.
Right.
Align.
There's, there seems to be quite a bit of erosion on the side of the hill. I'm just concerned with, with that being addressed.
I think there was.
By the applicant.
Yeah, I could talk to this real quick, if that would be alright. Yeah, he was right, we, so we were actually burned twice. The second one's that Rocky Creek fire. And so we left some stuff there to see what would grow back. Some of it didn't, and then we came in, we cleared, and then planted cover crops. And we've been doing that for the last two years to make sure we have good root, trying to get root retention on there. But some of that land also is zoned for vineyard that we did about 10 years ago. And so some, I apologize, I don't have the slide in front of me, so I'm not familiar with the area, but there has been work in the past on the vineyard areas. And then there is this work here for the tree and brush clearing areas that we were trying to mitigate and put some cover crop down on.
Yeah, I don't see any indication of any cover crop. It, it appears to be barren land. There shows some, like a logging skid road, and then another picture shows just basically a blank hill with a burnt-out tree sitting up on the very top of the ridge. So it, it, I'm just concerned with the bare, the bare ground sitting there. And is that in, I don't know if that's actually within the area that is going to be used by you folks for this project, because there's no indication. It just says northwest view of the cultivation area, and then the eastern view of the cultivation area, and the north view of the cultivation site, so.
You know, it might have, if it was the pictures, and again, I apologize that I have them in front of me, but I would guess it's the pictures from the clearing that was done at the time, and then since then, which would be happy to provide more pictures to show you guys the cover crop that's been put down and is taken and in place now.
Was that cover crop put in? And it looks like it was probably put in with a seed drill?
Yeah, we just ran our, like standard vineyard practice, used a seed drill, and then ran some of the cover crops we use in other vineyard applications.
So those are the lines that you see, Bob, were probably from the seed drill? And this was before any, any rain was received on it, it looks like, in, in Slide 13?
Yeah. And then 15 again shows it a little better, but it, it actually looks like some of it is eroded out, like in the lower right corner down there. But it's hard to, it's hard to tell from the picture that was taken, so. Alright, I don't have anything further at this point, Mr. Chair.
I did read through the property management plan, and it, they do have some pretty, pretty in-depth operations for, to prevent this as far as obviously it's followed through with. If you have any, if that helps, Bob. Obviously, follow through is always.
No, I, I've read the plan, but I, I'm concerned with what I saw versus what I read, so.
Right, I hear you.
And I apologize, I don't know if it's function of my funky computer today, but I, I don't know what you're looking at. I know you told me where you're looking, but I never saw a PowerPoint on the screen or anything, and I don't have, I can't access that through the agenda.
No, it's not on the screen, John. We got an email from staff this morning that had the PowerPoint attached because they were not going to use the PowerPoint because it leaves us vulnerable to the outside attacks.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry, yep, it's, I didn't, I guess once I got set up, I didn't even check my email, and there it is. I don't need to hold anything up, I was following your conversation closely. I just was baffled about what you were looking at.
Okay, does anybody have anything else anymore? And we'll open it up to public comment. Do you want to take a look at that first, John, or?
No, 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 I'll, I'll look at it while there might be any public comment. I apologize for the confusion.
Okay, do we have any public comment? We'll open it up for that. Jake, can you help us out on that, please?
Yes. Okay, so it looks like we do have a handup from Sally Peterson. Sally, I will unmute you here. I have, Sally, I sent you an unmute request. Alright, looks like you're muted. Yes, will you please confirm your first and last name for the record?
Yes. Aminahie, Amini Awani Kinoni Kalakta. My name is Sally Peterson. I serve Middletown Rancheria as the Tribal Council Vice Chairwoman and also the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer. And I just wanted to note for the record that we have been in contact and working with the property owner since last year. And we actually entered into an agreement to provide tribal monitoring for ground disturbances on the project. That agreement we entered into on August 1st of 2019. So, so I, it's obvious this property owner's been working on this for quite a while. And I did want to thank the property owner for his cooperation with the tribe and working in partnership with the tribe. And I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that the planning department does. I know Victor came into this project halfway, so he had a lot to pick up on, but I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work on the project and hope it goes through. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Okay, so that was the, uh, one hand that we had raised in the, in the Zoom room.
Okay. We don't have anybody here in the audience, so just so everybody knows that.
Uh, I can follow up by, um, offering an unmute to everybody in the room to make sure that no one is missing the raise hand detail.
Okay, let's go ahead for just a minute. Jake?
Okay, I will do that real quick. All right, the Zoom four, uh, has been set on mutes. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, I'm not hearing anybody. One last chance. Okay. All right. Seeing no more, we're hearing no more public comment, we will go ahead and close the public comment period. And, uh, see if the board has anything else they wish to address. Any other questions?
I have no other questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I have nothing else, sir.
Eagle, are you still on here?
Yeah, he's muted.
There he is. Yeah, I don't have any questions either.
Okay. All right. Whatever you guys wish to do.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John?
In that case, I, I have a motion I'd like to offer.
Okay, go ahead.
That was completely, I'm completely scrambled. I didn't hear what might have been said. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Okay, I'm sorry if I feel cranky. I aggravated my computer and my connection today. I, I apologize.
Don't worry, just take your time. We're here with you.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission find that the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, IS eighteen dash seven one, applied for by Spencer Clark on property located at two one two four two Morgan Valley Road, Lower Lake, and further described as APN oh one two dash oh six nine dash oh eight, will not have a significant effect on the environment. And therefore, a mitigated, mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated August three, twenty twenty.
Second. Malley.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinram?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, John.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit, UP eighteen dash four eight, applied for by Spencer Clark on property located at two one two four two Morgan Valley Road, Lower Lake, further described as APN oh one two dash oh six nine dash oh eight, does meet the requirements of section fifty one point four and article twenty seven, section one, I, 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 G, I, 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 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and their major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated August three, twenty twenty.
Malley, second.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinram?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. I'd like to note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to five P M. on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Okay. That concludes the major business on our agenda today. Do we have any, uh, untimed staff updates? Or office news, or? No?
Uh, Commissioner?
Yes.
If I may, this is Nicole.
Yes, Nicole.
You had a, uh, as a commission, you had a couple of questions from last commission meeting. Um, and I have some answers for you, if now's a good time.
Maybe if you could remind us.
Okay, uh, the first question was whether or not commissioners can attend staff meetings. And, um, I'm sorry to say that I was unable to find any way in which commissioners can attend staff meetings without violating the Brown Act. So commissioners cannot attend staff meetings. However, if commissioners are, um, still interested in how staff, um, um, processes applications, then, um, the commission is certainly capable and, and is allowed to request an update from staff, uh, on internal policies, ha- um, the actual process, and, and, and how things are handled and submitted to staff. But that would have to be a presentation at a meeting.
Okay.
The second question was, uh, it related to the, um, annual reports for cannabis licensing. And, uh, there was a section that was referenced from the ordinance, um, in the parent ethical ease and cannabis section, uh, number five, annual reports. And there is, uh, in that, in that ordinance section for performance review, there is a requirement that, um, cannabis permittees submit a per- a performance review report annually, uh, counted from the day that their permit was, um, a- active. And the commission can, um, is given authority in that ordinance section to review, uh, and to, uh, approve those reports. The commission can, if it chooses, delegate the authority to review and approve the reports to the director of C D D. Um, and, uh, but if the, if the commission chooses to do so, the commission is no longer involved in the review and approval of those reports. So if your commission wishes to be active in that review and approval, you cannot delegate the duty. So that would mean that those reports would have to come to you as a commission, and you would have to review them, and you would have to approve them. So there wouldn't be a summary that staff provides to you, and then you, you know, do some sort of high-level deliberation. You would actually have to look at the individual reports for the individual permittees as a commission. Which would be, I think they have on the books at the moment about thirty-three of them. So it would be involved. We are looking at ways of streamlining this process, staff and I, um, that however might make, would likely take a recommendation from your commission, a resolution to the board recommending an, uh, an amendment of that ordinance, that section of the ordinance. But that would take time, and it may not impact how you handle the current thirty-three applications that are coming up for review, I'm sorry, thirty-three permits that are coming up for review right now. So, um, we'll still, we'll still have to work with the ordinance as it stands currently for those thirty-three, and then work on ways to, to amend, to recom- work on recommendations to amend, uh, the process and the ordinance for future applications.
Nicole, this is John Hess.
Yes.
Does that, does, does such, uh, commission review mean each of those thirty-three reports would have to be an agendized item? With public input at best?
Um, well, it would be, the, the ordinance section is a little odd. So, um, it, the best, um, interpretation we can come up with is that it would be a, a hearing, in essence. The individual permittees would be noticed. They would be noticed that it is, it is a re- a review of their performance review report, and that the potential action that could occur at that time would be that the commission could potentially, um, require more frequent performance review reports for them, from them. Or arguably lessen the frequency of performance review reports, depending on how good, um, how successful they have been in meeting the requirements for their applica- for their permit or not. Um, so it would be required, it would be a circumstance in which, um, the, the permittee would be noticed, they would, they would be permitted a chance to speak. Um, and, uh, as with any item that goes on the agenda, uh, the public would be, would be allowed to speak as well.
So, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, that could mean that every one of those thirty-three applications could be, in a sense, um, re-adjudicated and re-contested and argued about,
No.
with a review.
No, that, that is the risk. I mean, we're, in the sense that we would have to be very careful to, to, to not re-evaluate the permit itself. What this would be, would be, and the wording in the, the ordinance is this. Um, it is intended to identify the, the effectiveness of the approved minor or major use permit operation, the use permit, operations manual, operating standards, and conditions of approval, as well as the identification and implementation of additional procedures as deemed necessary. And it is, it is just that. It is the evaluation of the success of the applicant, of the, the permit and the applicant meeting the requirements of the permit. The permit itself has already been approved. So if the commission were to determine that there, that the applicant was unsuccessful, um, then the ne- then potentially, for example, if, if in an extreme case you found there were violations found, there's a whole separate process for amendment and revocation of permits, and that would be an entire, entirely different hearing. The only purpose of this performance review hearing would be to review those items that were listed, to determine success or not. The commission would then either approve or not approve the, um, performance review report, and then determine whether or not the applicant needs to submit more frequent performance review reports or less. And that's it. And then potentially the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, thank, thank you, my colleagues, for bearing with me. I just have one more question. So would that mean then that upon our review, um, we would have to take the action rather than do review and be authorized to delegate action to, um, Tokara in this case, or Scott DeLeone?
The language of the ordinance only permits the, the commission to delegate the review and approval authority to the director of C D D. There is no authority for the director to delegate to staff. So that decision is either, so the appro- the review and approval is, according to the ordinance language, solely within the commission's authority, or if the commission chooses the, to delegate that authority to the director, then the authority would be with the director. Staff would not be responsible for the decision. So either the, so the review and approval would either be with the commission or the director.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Sure, anytime.
So we're looking to make, to see how well they have conformed to the, the parameters of their permit? And if they've followed all the.
Yes, you're looking to identify the effectiveness of those things listed in the ordinance. So the operations manual, operating standards, and conditions of approval. Um, and identifying and, uh, the identification and implementation of additional procedures, um, as deemed necessary. We're still trying to determine what that lang- that language is a bit vague, so we're trying to determine what would fit in that category. This is why we, I'm sure at the time that, um, that this ordinance was recommended, it made sense within the framework at that time. Um, it seems that as applied today, it, um, it, it doesn't quite entirely fit with the structure as it has evolved. Um, so that is why staff may recommend, uh, that the commission requests, uh, or the commission, um, provide a resolution to the, the board recommending changes in language for this, to streamline it and make it more in line with the way the process, um, or make it more effective with the current process. But in the meantime, because that will take time to change the ordinance, in the meantime, we still have to work with the language we have.
Right.
And with that language, the things that the commission or the director, depending, would consider in their review would be the things listed in the language that I just read to you. And the only decision that would result from that review would be whether or not, um, the report needs to be submitted by the permittee either more frequently or less.
So there, they, you said they have thirty, what, thirty-three?
Thirty-three.
And are those ready to be presented to us as they sit, or do we have five or ten of them that are ready, or how does that look? I feel like we should at least start to hear some of them and go from there. I mean, it, it's, you know, it's all, this, this is the first, first time this is being done, and it's, you know, a brand-new ordinance. You know, fairly new, obviously. Um, and so we're not gonna know how it's gonna go until we start doing it, I, I think. I don't know if anyone else feels the same way. I don't hear any argument, so.
Chair, was that a question directed to the staff that you needed to answer?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Um, staff has completed approximately seven inspections, because it's a two-part process. The actual inspection of the cultivation, and then the annual report, which the permittee completes and then provides. Um, we have not, staff has not completely conducted any of the annual performance reports because we're waiting for the applicants to provide those. We've given them a deadline of September thirtieth to provide them to staff. And the plan was to review them and then bring them back to you once we have them, but long answer short, we do not currently have any annual reports in hand to provide for you for a review. Um, if staff is directed to do so, we can, um, work with permittees to expedite that process. But as of this moment, right now, time, um, staff does not have any annual reports to provide.
Okay. I, I would.
Daniel?
Yes, go ahead, John, please.
Oh, I have another question for Nicole.
Sure.
If, if this were an item that we discussed as a duly constituted commission, um, I assume that has to be noticed then, and if the public is given an opportunity to comment on our review, um, the comments they could make then would be limited to the four corners of that review, rather than objections about the permit in the first place, et cetera. But would that mean that each copy of the review would have to be made public so that the public could review it and make informed comment?
Uh, the rules are that if we provide, if we provide an item to the commissioners, then it needs to be available to the public as well. Uh, so, um, that's, that's largely why you don't see, um, cultural resource reports and things like that, is because there is, and other things that are by law confidential. Because once we provide it to the commission, it becomes a public document. So, um, in this case, I can't, it doesn't specifically state in the ordinance section, but, um, based on general applicable rules, um, if, if the commission is reviewing the report, it would have to be a public report. And yes.
Right, and then the comments would have to be limited?
Sorry, go ahead.
Then have to be limited to that review document?
Well, um, we can't, there's, the Brown Act doesn't allow for strict limiting of comments from public. So as long as it's on the item, arguably the public could comment on anything. We couldn't necessarily stop them from doing that. Um, you can certainly ask for them to limit their comment because your consideration is, is based, your consideration will be of the items listed in the ordinance. So you cannot reeval- you as a commission cannot reevaluate the application itself. So, um, uh, it, I would say that if, if the comments were strictly on whether or not the application should have been approved at all, then that would be non-responsive to the item in front of you. Um, so, but, um, the question is, I mean, the, the rule of thumb that I use with, with comments is, uh, would it be, would it be m- m- more inconvenient to have a challenge to your decision for limiting comments than it would be to sit and listen to them? So if, if, if it's, right, so if it's, if it's more, if, if it's not disruptive and it's in the general direction of the subject at hand, the public should be permitted to speak. Um, it, your consideration, however, may not include everything that's a con- so you have a lot of leeway, authority as commissioners, to weigh evidence that's in front of you, and if a commenter is commenting on an item in a way that is not persuasive, or you do not think that, um, that particular comment should be given a great deal of weight because it is not something that's in front of you to be considered, then you do not have to give it weight. But if we do limit, right, their commenting, then we right, then we run up against issues that, for the Brown Act as far as limiting public comments. So it's just, it's just, um, easier to allow the public to speak and then wait their comments accordingly.
Oh, I, I, I understand that, and I, my point was not to suggest we could limit public comments somehow. I'm just trying to visualize in a real-world setting, you know, what, what this would look like.
And that's very.
Terms of the commission.
Yeah, that's a very real concern, that this could become, the risk that this could become a reevaluation of a permit, which it cannot be. So that's not what, that's not what this is doing. Because the permits have already been issued, and there's a whole separate process for amending and revoking permits. This is strictly to evaluate the success of the permittee in relation to the items that were listed in the ordinance, man, operating manual, operating standards, conditions of approval, and et cetera. So, and then again, the only decision that comes out of that is whether or not the commission would deem it necessary for that applicant to have more frequent reports submitted or less.
So that would be the only outcome, more frequent or less frequent? There's nothing, like if it's determined that they are not meeting some of the
The permit requirement?
Yes, requirements.
Right.
We can't impose more requirements upon them?
You can, but not in this hearing.
Right.
So there's a different structure, and there's a different process in a different part of the ordinance that deals with hearings for amendments and revocation of permits. So if there's a permit violation, there's a process for staff to recommend, bring a hearing, or for the commission to bring a hearing for the amendment and revocation of permits.
And the other
Presumably, the way this, the way this structure works for this section of the performance review ordinance section is that, and staff alluded to this, that there is, staff does a site visit and creates a report, an inspection report, that they then give to the permittee. The permittee includes that report in their performance review report to the commission. So presumably, any violations that occur, that are noted, would be noted during that inspection. And then that would trigger whatever processes are required for that kind of violation or failure to meet the requirements of their permit. So the fact that this performance review is done does not preclude other action taken by staff. So presumably, they can be parallel actions.
Okay.
If that answers
And then another, another reason for this may be also to see if, how effective the ordinance is too, correct?
That is correct, and you may, as I said, include in a resolution when you've identified sort of bumps in the road and parts of the ordinance that may have seemed great on paper, but in practicality, when rubber meets the road, didn't actually work the way expected. You can certainly put in a resolution to the board, a recommendation for an amendment of the ordinance. And you may want, and staff may want to make some recommendations as to what that would include, especially for the performance review section that we're looking at today, to make it more, more in line with the way the process has developed over the last couple of years.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Bob.
I see that Director DeLeon is, his hand up, so possibly he has some at foot.
Sure, thank you, Bob. I don't have that in front of me, so. Scott?
We have to get Jake to lay it in.
I have given him the ability to unmute, and it looks like he lowered his hand.
Oh, maybe he had something else he wanted to say.
Thank you. One of the things I might suggest here is, as Tokara has pointed out, we've done a number of inspections over the last couple of weeks, and perhaps we can develop our report that we're supposed to do, that, and which will summarize our inspection, and we're supposed to give that back to the permittee for inclusion in their performance review report. Perhaps we could get half dozen of these reports together and bring them to your commission here as soon as we can get them, and do a bit of a trial run with this process. As we also pointed out, we have thirty-something inspections. I'm not going to propose we bring all thirty of them to you, but sample, just to test this out, and perhaps the commission will, you know, if things appear to be in good shape, you can delegate, delegate some of this back to the department, and then we can also consider some language of bringing to the commission only those reports of projects that are falling short of meeting specific guidelines. I think there's some things we can, we can potentially do here to not bog down the entire system, but also comply with the ordinance. And my suggestion would be to get some, get a handful of them scheduled to bring to your commission as quickly as we can.
If I may? I have a quick question there, Scott. Are you suggesting that you bring in the, that staff bring in the inspection report before the performance review report?
No, not at all. What I'm suggesting is, we've made inspections on a number of projects, and what we need to do is create an inspection report and get that to the applicant, get that to the person that is the permittee that's operating the grow, for them to prepare their performance review report as required by the ordinance. And what I'm suggesting is, once we receive a handful of these performance review reports from the permittees, we'll get them scheduled on the planning commission so that they can look at a half dozen reports. I'm picking that number just for discussion purposes. But instead of trying to put all thirty-three projects that we've inspected on the planning commission agenda, let's bring a few of them in and take a look at them, and start developing a process that we may or may not want to modify as we move along.
Okay.
Yep. Go ahead, Nicole.
That, yeah, that would fit within the ordinance as far as bringing the full, having the permittees bring the full report to the commission. Because as it stands right now, we have, both staff and county council have been unable to find any circumstance in which the commission has delegated their authority to review and approve the report. So as it stands right now, the commission is the authority to review the reports. It is important to remember that should you delegate that authority to the director of CDD to review and approve the reports, you will no longer, as a commission, have authority to review the reports. So you may get an update, you may always ask for an update from staff, a summary and update of what staff has been doing or what the director's been doing. So, but you would not have an active role in that review if you delegate the authority.
And I'm not proposing that at that time, just to be clear. I'm not proposing that you consider delegating the review of the reports. What I'm suggesting is bringing a handful of them in, and let's start developing a process. And if no changes are made, and you have applicants or permittees bring in their reviews, their reports, that's fine. But if it's something that seems like it can be done, then perhaps an opportunity to look at half a dozen of them might be a good start.
Yep, that's, I was going to say, the first thing is, as soon as you can get one or two of them completed and ready to go, let's go ahead and get them on the agenda and get them to us. And I don't know if it might be pertinent to maybe have a bullet point list as to what, what our main authority is on that, you know, like what the points are that we need to be focusing on in each particular, I don't know if they're going to be the same for each, each review, you know? I guess, I mean, it depends on what the, you know, how the permit was written, I suppose, but, does that sound good to everybody? Just as soon as there's one or two
Mr. Chair, I, I think that's a great suggestion from Mr. DeLeon. I think that's
Yeah. Well, let's just go ahead, as soon as there's one or two, let's go ahead and have it available to us, and we'll start it and see how it goes.
Yeah, I believe that Scott's on the right track. I see the planning commission's involvement in this to root out the bad actors versus picking on or making any recommendations on the, on the good actors. So if staff has a review and they have some problems, then I think the planning commission needs to be involved. If not, then, you know, I'm okay with letting staff and the director work out whatever, you know, normal, quote-unquote, normal procedure they want to work out.
I agree.
Okay. Are we okay with that? Does anybody have any clarifications they need to make? Staff, you're okay with?
I would like to ask Nicole a question, Commissioner Brown.
Yes, go ahead.
So you mentioned the issue of confidential reports. If these, if we're going to review any of these, these performance review reports, is that going to open us up to having to release confidential information?
No, staff would need to be careful to not include, and make sure that the permittees understand not to include information that would otherwise be confidential. And then, but most of the information, if not all of the information, in these reports should be public information anyway because the permits are public information. The hearing that adopted the permit was public information, was a public hearing. So the bulk of it should be public information. But that, you're, but you're correct, and that's important to, thank you for the reminder that when going through these reports and preparing them, we need to be mindful of not including information that is otherwise protected as confidential.
Yes, and my concern again would be the disclosure of archaeological reports, how the county would have to interact with the tribes in terms of AB-52 consultation. So that's kind of why I'm asking the question.
Yes, and that's, thank you, that's very good to keep in mind because those are, those are parts of the conditions. And so when, when a permittee would provide their report, it would be important they be mindful of giving the general, you know, general evidence of their compliance with the conditions in the permit, but not the details as far as agreements with tribes they may have, or locations of material, of cultural resources, and the specifics around confidential information. So it would be important to double-check and make sure that that information is not included in these reports, if it's protected otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
Turn my microphone back on. Okay. Staff is indicating that they understand the direction we've given them so far. So if there is anything else, would anybody else like to say anything? At least make a motion, maybe? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if we are completed.
Chair, if I may?
Oh, wait, yes.
I'm sorry, I do, I do have one thing that I just want to say. I just want to publicly recognize the CDD team. Oh, no, what happened to you, Peter Tate? I'm sorry, we got this right there. I just wanted to publicly say thank you to the team, they've been doing a lot of hard work. The team has been very diligent, will bring it things before you, to review as the reviewing authority. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you to the community development team.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does anyone want to entertain a motion to adjourn?
I've entertained.
You are entertained? You look so entertained, Bob. All right, if there's no opposition, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. All right, we're adjourned.